Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Harrisburg City Council's Legislative Session. I want to take this time to apologize. We had an executive session dealing with our personnel issues today. Mr. Petrowski, please call the row.
Mr. Allitt.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Hodges.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
So, six twenty-five.
Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Allitt.
We could just take a moment and think of those less fortunate than ourselves, particularly as we enter into a deeply cold weekend and think of those without a roof to over their heads. And if we could just keep all those members of our community in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allitt. Moving on to Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you again, everyone, for waiting. We certainly do not like to keep anyone waiting, but it was really important that we discuss some personnel issues this evening. Moving on to, before I do communications, I just want to make a statement. On the agenda this evening is Bill Number Four, which addresses lesser penalties for the possession of marijuana. I would like to take this time to thank Mr. Otto Banks, who while in attendance at a conference with me, provided me with information and asked me to consider, like Philadelphia, a first-class city that took action to reform the laws surrounding marijuana. Now note that I'm not supporting this legislation to promote the use of an illegal substance, but supporting so that all people are treated fairly. This issue is about bringing equality in the law, that some people are given harsher sentences than others that have the same violation. Harrisburg City Council, Mr. Otto Banks, and Mr. Brandon Floyd, who is the Executive Director of the Black Caucus, we all want to change the future for many of our children in the city of Harrisburg, and this is the beginning. The Public Safety Chair will be conducting meetings within the next two weeks regarding this bill, but we will not be voting on it tonight. Thank you. Moving on to communications, I'm going to start at my left. Anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so now. Left, left, left. Left clock.
Left.
Concerning anything on the agenda. Okay, once or twice, Bill. That's it? Okay. Anyone in the middle? There you go.
My name is Les Stark, and I'm the Executive Director of the Keystone Cannabis Coalition, a statewide organization organized to end the criminal prohibition of cannabis. My organization applauds Mayor Papenfuss's proposal to lessen penalties for possession of cannabis to a summary offense. We also applaud council's willingness to take this issue head-on. In March of 1933, a Berks County freshman legislator named Chester A. Moan introduced an amendment to ban marijuana in Pennsylvania. The bill was passed until May 22nd and signed into law by Governor Gifford Pinchett. It went into effect on September 1st, 1933, curiously timed, as it was right about then that alcohol prohibition was ending. Immediately after the law went into effect, the arrests started. Defendants were often described in newspapers as Mexicans and Negroes. It was said that the marijuana was being cultivated in backyards throughout the city. In fact, it even grew wild in vacant lots right next to the Capitol, remnants of the old Dolphin County hemp industry. Of course, that hemp was very mild, nothing like the marijuana today, but people smoked it nevertheless and were being arrested for it right and left. The first two people arrested in Harrisburg were named Emmanuel Price and Franny Fortune. They were arrested one week after the law went into effect, on September 9th, 1933. In 1938, the Harrisburg Telegraph declared war on marijuana and said that Harrisburg's war was Pennsylvania's war. They sparked an increased crackdown in Harrisburg and throughout the state. How many lives have been ruined in Harrisburg and throughout the state since 1933? Undoubtedly, thousands in this city alone, hundreds of thousands throughout the state. Pennsylvania arrests nearly 25,000 people each year for possession, cultivation, and sales of cannabis. That's over 200,000 people in just the last 10 years. According to the Pennsylvania Uniform Crime Report, shows that 299 adult marijuana possession arrests were made by Harrisburg City Police. Of those 299, 200 were black. 299 arrests at $1,266 per arrest equals $378,000. Another thousand to bring to court equals $677,000, $677,000 spent on low-level pot arrest every year by the city. That's 5% of your current budget. We need statewide decriminalization, something that Governor Wolf supports. Change in Harrisburg will accelerate that change, and we support it. We do feel that there is an element of unfairness, though. Pittsburgh and Philadelphia both have opted for $25 fines. $100 is too high for a first offense, and $200 is too high for a second offense, elevating the charges to a misdemeanor for a third offense, we feel is unjust as well. We recommend a smaller fine, more in line with Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, as the penalty will most likely fall on those with low income. We recommend that the third-strike provision be changed. That's just a bunch of prohibitionist garbage. Our community has suffered enough. Possession of cannabis is not a criminal offense and should never be treated like one, not even as a third offense. Someday, we'll have full legalization of cannabis in Pennsylvania, and prohibitionists will look pathetically foolish. We applaud your effort, but ask you to reach down a bit deeper and take a more even approach than the misguided third-strike provision and the higher fines. The message it sends is that Harrisburg citizens are not trusted to live like responsible and free adults, like the citizens of Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. It would be the same if, after prohibition, people were fined $100 for a six-pack of beer, then $200, and then elevated to a misdemeanor criminal offense for the third time with the six-pack. I remind you that cannabis is perfectly legal in Colorado, Washington, Alaska, Oregon, and Washington, D.C., and in November, five more states are expected to fully legalize cannabis. If you're going to end this madness, let's do it right. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anyone else in the middle? And for the record, sir, council brought this to the, council brought this to, not the mayor.
Okay.
And I give him his due process, but we brought this last year to Harrisburg. That's okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my right?
Good evening. I have a couple of things about the Bill Four. Not so much against, but something I think you should have council, your solicitor, check out. First thing is-
Could you identify yourself, please?
Lenora Smith, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
The first thing is whether or not a third-class city can do this. I realize that Philly and Pittsburgh have done it, but they're first-class and second-class counties, so there may be some statewide things that third-class cities have to be concerned about. The second thing is, is that a person found guilty of illegal drug possession loses his or her driver's license. Question is whether or not your legislation, if the person is charged with the summary offense, will that affect the driver's license? Because quite frankly, I think that's more important than the record. I think the record is important, but if a person loses their driver's license for six months, they can't get to work.
Sure.
And then, these are just minor while I was still sitting here. Is this an option for the police or a mandate? In other words, a person has a little bit of marijuana, do they have to charge you with this little offense, or can they mess with you, basically? And the second, the third thing is, what role event will the DA's office have? Because the police, of course, sometimes look to the DA's office to approve certain criminal offenses or charges. I'm going to leave this little paper around here so you guys, when you have your meetings, because I probably won't be here for meetings, but those are some of the legal issues that I see that may occur.
Sorry, Mr. Thank you. Here, give it to Mr., give it to our city clerk, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Mr. Johnson is Chair of Public Safety. He will be having the meetings, Ms. Next, please.
I'm Chris Senek from Harrisburg, here in Midtown. Also, I ran for City Council with 75 votes under the Socialist Party, so just want to present here a little poster I made a few minutes ago about how many states have it fully legalized, like Les said, and they're making a ton of cash in Colorado, sending children to school with that money. So, we do have over 20 states that have it medically or decriminalized, and Washington, D.C., actually lets you grow six plants. So, and here in Harrisburg, I feel like the proposal is rather mild in regards to, you know, like the legalization and the end of prohibition, and I feel like we should, instead of moving an eighth of an inch forward, we should move the full step, or just as long as, like, we're on par with Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. Like, the prohibition of marijuana has had crazy effects, like, on personal lives in a lot of different instances. Like, when I was in 10th grade, there was a 16-year-old boy that got shot over a bad weed deal, and like, that sort of behavior is like, I mean, it's an absolute tragedy, and that's only because it is strikingly illegal and has been since the '30s. And being 2016, I feel like we really need to move forward on this, and I applaud you guys for starting to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Brandi Barzik. I'm from Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. I'm just in, I think this legislation is a step in the right direction, because prohibition is an unconstitutional and racist policy, and cannabis has medicinal, economic, and environmental factors that could really benefit the country.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'd like to say one thing about crime in the city of Harrisburg. We always talk about clearing our streets and making our city a lot safer. Give me a joint. Let's think about that. I walk in Allison Hill, uptown Harrisburg, there are things called "space," where they dip that thing that we call "pot" into it, and some of our children become literally insane. We talk about crime. Why are we interested in making sure that crime will escalate? We know that. This is nothing but a ploy to have more revenue. We're not ready for that yet. There are too many things going on now that we're trying to stop within the city, and people are talking about marijuana legalizing. Then, why don't you legalize crack, then? Because that'll be the next step. Why don't you legalize heroin, then? Because they're going to stand here at this microphone and say these words: "If you let that happen, then what, what about us?" So I say, once again, let's stop thinking about the revenue and the money. We talk about, just once again, of, they're cold people. There are people freezing in the street this evening, but all we do is talk about it. There's no action here. And there are a lot of people that say to me, that I stand here and keep standing here, and I'm asking this council and the Honorable Mayor of this great city, when will you help the ones that are poor, the ones that will, you will not help? Thirdly, I love Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. I don't like Dolphin County Prison. On Martin Luther King's birthday, I spent four hours in Dolphin County Prison in a cell, because I made the mistake of looking at someone that was in authority, and the one that I looked like, they said to me, "Don't look at me." Council, and my great city that I'm born in, I thought this was over. It's not. And then we still say about being fair. What about your constitutional rights? You cannot even walk in the Broad Street Market. You can't walk. I have to have someone walk with me, because when I walk there, nothing that I say, nothing that I do, without someone walking with me, you better not even try it. All I'm saying, fairness, let's do things right. I love the city. I have nothing wrong with the police here in the city, but I don't like when an officer tells me this: "Don't look at me, and don't look at her." Slavery's over. Once again, as I said, people that are responsible, Community and Economic Chair of the city of Harrisburg, we need to change this, because our children are going to look at this, and you're giving them carte blanche. They're coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Hearing none. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to approval of minutes, approval of the legislative session minutes of January 12th, 2016, council members. Are there any deletion amendments or corrections at this time? Hearing none. Minutes are stand as approved. Moving on to reports of committees. Report from Chair Baltimore on the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting on Monday, February 1st, 2016. Mr. Baltimore, are you ready for your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We met February 1st to discuss Resolution 5, 2016, and it was a resolution approving a preliminary final land development plan and lot consolidation plans submitted by Scott Sasso of Harrisburg Properties Associates. And it was the consolidation of six properties near the off-ramp, 83 off-ramp near 19th Street, to develop an approximately 15,000-square-foot adult daycare facility. The site sits on about two acres, and the facility will be able to accommodate about 140 adults. There will be 70 parking spaces. I believe the way the facility will operate is they will be transported in by van, so that, I think there was a waiver on the amount of parking spaces they need. Construction value be about 2.8 million, and total project value be about 3.37 million. We'll have an increase in taxes, about $28,000 for the city, $85,000 for the school district, $20,000, maybe $21,000 for the county. It will provide 100 construction jobs, and initially 90 full-time jobs. I think that'll jump up to about 125 after three years. It allows primary caregivers to remain in the, well, it allows adults to remain in their homes and get daycare at the facility and then return to their homes. It allows the primary caregivers to remain in the workforce and pursue other interests. And I encourage my colleagues to approve the project.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Report from Chair Allitt on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Monday, February 1st, 2016. Mr. Allitt, are you ready with your committee report?
I sure am. All right. So we had reopened the budget, and the purpose of the meeting on Monday, February 1st, was to discuss that in greater depth and give our new colleagues on council an ability to weigh and ask questions on concerns they have within the budget for this current fiscal year. One of the biggest discussions that came out of that evening was about appropriations pertaining to some personnel changes in terms of salary adjustments. One of the things that we've noted that has occurred historically in the city is a little bit of a salary inequity and parity that exists among those at various levels within the city. And we recognize that it's incumbent upon us to address that head-on and come to a solution on how to deal with that going forward. But it puts us in a tricky position, because here we sit having to pass a budget in addition to look at certain inequities that exist within the city, both from a parity standpoint, but also from a roles and responsibility standpoint. So, there's been a lot of discussion stemming from that meeting and on among members of council in terms of trying to determine the best way forward. Thankfully, the administration has come down with an ordinance to address that from a salary ordinance standpoint. And so I find myself in a little bit of like a chicken and an egg kind of moment, where we recognize that we have some legislation to start addressing that long-term, but we have an immediate need to pass a budget and begin appropriating what we'd feel are appropriate levels to pay people in specific positions. So, there's some degree of conflict that exists with us on council, but I do believe that we have the ability to, you know, move forward, and I look forward to us getting the salary ordinance done and worked out to make sure that we are paying fairly and equitably within the city and doing so in a just fashion. So, we will, we will get to that. There'll be a series of amendments that we will look at when we go through the process, and hopefully we can get things resolved to a point that satisfies those of us on this body, as well as with the administration. And I think, I think we can get there. So, I encourage the colleagues to sit back, fasten your seatbelts, and we'll get there tonight, hopefully in a very expedient fashion. But on a, on a larger note, I know that a lot of the discussion, you know, around the budget process has been about, you know, the implementation of LST, and that's something that is still coming as part of the discussion. We have to appropriate funds to balance our budget, and we will do that tonight. But there's still some things that are left unsaid and undone, and I think Council President Williams will, will speak to that as part of our meetings out of the Act 47 process. What I want people to understand from our process here is that we have a fiduciary responsibility as a council to pass a budget that's balanced, and, and we are going to do that. There's work left undone within the Act 47 process that we are committed to working on, but we have a job to do in the city, and we need to make sure that we are appropriating for core city services to be done and done immediately and without delay, and we are committed to doing that. We are committed, though, the long-term, to make sure that we, we also address the long-term structural deficit that has existed within our budget. And we are going to hold that Act 47 team accountable to make sure that we've done that to the best of our ability. So I realize that there is work that we still need to do, and we will do it, but tonight we have an important responsibility to pass that budget and make sure that we've appropriated appropriately for our, our city to get the job done we need to do this year. I think that's all I have to say for right now.
Okay. Thank you. And just to the public, just keep in mind that Bill Six of 2016, which is the LST tax, it is going into a committee, so we will be having additional meetings, and please come out and give your opinion as to what you feel that we should do or not do as far as voting for this LST tax. That's going to be under the Budget and Finance Committee, and I'm sure Mr. Allitt will set those meetings up within the next couple of weeks. Thank you. Moving on to the report from Chair Williams on the Administration Committee meeting on Wednesday, February 3rd, 2016. And also, I had an additional meeting on January 21st, 2016, and that was the two meetings that I held regarding the modification to the Strong Plan. On January 21st, 2016, committee business was Resolution 1, 2016, approving Bill McAvoy to serve on the Building and Housing Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg. Mr. McAvoy is currently the president and CEO of the firm Willing, Dorrod, and McAvoy Architects, PC. He brings hands-on experience involving residential and multi-family dwellings. He's an expert detailed designs and presentation drawings, as well as a registered architect with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Mr. McAvoy has the credentials and would be an asset for the city to serve on this board. I would ask that my colleagues support me with an affirmative vote appointing Mr. McAvoy to this board. The next word of business is the review of the proposed modifications to the Harrisburg Strong Plan, and it's a continuation of the discussion on February 3rd, 2016. In attendance, along with Fred Reddick, who is the Coordinator for DCED, was Jerry Cross and Patty Morehouse with the Pennsylvania Economy League, Jennifer Snyder with Dillon and Paxton, who is our Labor Counsel for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Jonathan Ingram, who's with Novak Consulting Group, and Pat McNulty, who's the Chief Counsel. At the February 3rd, 2016, meeting was Claire Bluefit from Dillon and Paxton, who was also present. The discussion focused on amendments that were updated as of January 2016 and targeted several areas. And please bear with me, because we have about 10 or 12 areas, and for those who wasn't here and the, it wasn't filmed that night on Channel 20, you would not know the discussion of the amendments that they were asking or the modifications. So there is quite a few, so if I seem to be going on and on and on, please bear with me. I'm sorry. Under workforce, with the Commonwealth, asked us to do seven modifications, and under those was, number one, was project revenues and expenditures for the next three fiscal years. Number two, retain experienced labor counsel to negotiate collective bargaining agreements. Number three, establish and participate in labor management committees. Number four, monitor pension plan funding. Number five, implement Affordable Care Act. Number six, establish OP, that's Other Post-Employment Benefits. Now, the Commonwealth has already indicated that they set $3.7 million aside to go into this particular fund. And number seven was unions agree to eliminate the OP for new hires and renegotiated contracts. They want us to have the unions to eliminate this Other Post-Employment Benefit. Next topic was administration. That was six modifications. One was to fill the business administrator position. Now, the Commonwealth is agreeing that they would do 50% of that salary. At this point, I am going to request, and I'm sure council members will agree, that we will let, ask them to do 100% of the salary for the business administrator. Number two, enhance existing performance management systems. Number three, develop and implement performance measurement system, develop comprehensive financial policies, require the coordinator to review and comment prior to new public safety hiring grants, develop five-year capital improvement plan. Next, we go to information technology. There's five modifications. Replace uninterrupted power supply, eliminate unused phone lines, separate document management and imaging system backups, consider installing city-owned Cuduit under roads, develop and fund citywide computer replacement plan. Next category is law. There's only one modification under the law that the Commonwealth requested, and that was to use professional assistance for labor relations activities. Next is police. There's six. Evaluate shift alternatives for uniform patrol, utilize Dolphin County forensic investigative team for forensic investigations, pursue regional policing opportunities, increase vice and street crimes unit, fund police department vehicle replacements, replacement and upgrade of Uniform Patrol Division mobile data terminals. Under fire, four modifications. Develop company-based fire inspection program, conduct regional fire service delivery study, incorporate fire apparatus replacement, revise false alarm fee ordinance. Next, we go to public works. There were 11 modifications. Implement curbside collection, develop recurring fleet replacement program, transition commercial accounts to the city, complete evaluation of billing and auditing and reconciliation of sanitation accounts, purchase leaf vacuum equipment, sanitation system improvements, implement fleet and fuel management system, develop surplus fleet disposable program, develop facilities condition assessment, develop public works facility transition plan, and develop prioritized projects for impact Harrisburg. Moving on to Community Economic Development, there were four. Complete and implement comprehensive plan and housing strategy, develop master plan for city island, develop park infrastructure maintenance and workload standards, evaluate conversion of park maintenance employees to facility maintenance technicians, technicians, excuse me. Under revenue, there were seven. Increase local service tax, maintain other tax rates at existing levels, review real estate tax assessments, review and increase pilots, that's payments and lose of taxes, improve real estate tax collection rate, work with parking system managers to maximize revenue, and the last, consider transition from business privilege to mercantile tax to payroll prep tax. Now, with the modifications stated, additional funding is needed to accomplish these goals. The coordinator has agreed to seek funding, as well as the city applying to the DCED for grants. The city has already addressed a large percentage of the- The city has already addressed a large percentage of the amendments that are presently in place that's requested by the coordinator. It is the intention of this council to maintain core service, meet all financial obligations, and most of all, to reach sustainability and move out of Act 47 under the coordinator. As the president, I would continue to schedule upcoming meetings to address additional comments or amendments and revisions that I receive from my colleagues, our residents regarding the modifications to the Strong Plans, and I really request that residents, please come to the meetings regarding the modification to the Strong Plan. There's issues there that need to be addressed, and we'd like to hear your opinion on those particular issues and amendments. Additionally, there are copies of the Strong Plan in the council office as well on the DCED website. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, Bill 3, 2016. Mr., pardon me? Okay. You want to do it now, before we go into?
No, actually, no, you can do it after that. Sorry.
You want to do it?
After.
Okay, okay. Ordinance for first reading, Bill 3, 2016. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 3 of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance of the City of Harrisburg, Dolphin County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania electing to amend its firefighter pension plan administered by the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System pursuant to Article 4 of the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement Law, agreeing to be bound by all provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement Law as amended and as applicable to member municipalities.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Bill 4.
Bill 4 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 3-330, General Offenses, by adding Section 373, providing for the assessment of a fine for the possession of small amounts of cannabis in the City of Harrisburg under certain terms and conditions.
That will be placed in Public Safety Committee. Bill 5, please.
Bill 5 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Mr. Allett. It's an ordinance vacating and striking the official map of the City of Harrisburg, a portion of South 20th Street between Sycamore and Pemberton Streets pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg.
That also will be placed in Public Safety Committee. Bill 6, please.
Bill 6 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allett, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance amending Title 5 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg Licensing and Taxation Code authorizing an increase of a local service tax for the 2016 tax year and thereafter reaffirming the elimination of the City of Harrisburg's emergency and municipal services tax and authorizing city officials to implement this ordinance.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Bill 7.
Bill 7 of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance to technically amend and update Section 2-307.7 of the Codified Ordinances of the City relating to personnel to include salary ranges of pay for nonrepresented exempt management positions within the City of Harrisburg for the 2016 budget year.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Bill 8.
Bill 8 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance to amend Title 3, Chapter 3-301, Citizen Complaints of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg to update the procedure related to the City of Harrisburg's citizen complaint process in the effort to make the process more accessible and thereby more inclusive.
And I will be placed in Public Safety at this time. I am going to ask for a five-minute recess. I need to take a recess to talk with our public, our budget and finance, the mayor and our solicitor, and we will be right back in about five minutes. Everyone, for your patience while we discuss some different issues that we have to resolve, we're back into session. Ordinance for amendment, Bill 1, 2016. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 1 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allett, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the City of Harrisburg for the year 2016.
Mr. Allett, did you want to do your amendments there? Do you want to?
Yes, please. Bear with me, everybody. This is going to be a process. We have a series of amendments that we will make as proposed amendments, and for those following along at home, there's several pages of them. The first page deals with personnel amendments. I am going to make a motion, and I'll read the amendments out. However, for Page 1, for the personnel amendments alone, we are requesting that we will approve the appropriation of these funds for salary adjustments. However, we are asking that the mayor withhold the implementation of those salary increases until we have passed a salary ordinance.
In layman's terms, you want to relate that to the public, what you're going to do?
In layman's terms, for those watching at home, is that we recognize we may want to appropriate the funds, but we want to go through the exercise of the salary ordinance to make sure that we've done the process fairly, but we have the funds in order to adjust the salaries in due process. Is that layman's terms enough? Does that?
Yes, most certainly.
So, bear with me as I have to read each of these amendments on Page 1. Joan, are you ready?
Now, excuse me. I have a question before he...
Do you want to suspend the rules?
Yeah, motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Thank you. Should he not do personnel, motion to do personnel, do each department separately?
Do you mean go by department, by department?
Right, separately.
I think he'd actually have trouble sorting that out from the way it is written.
Okay, okay. Do we have to do a motion each time, or do we, can we do one motion?
Each line item is what I think the clerk and I and chairman...
Yeah, if it just, if he just says, like, for example, for the first one, so city council budget unit code 0100101, account code 4140, salaries and wages, and then say what the change is.
Because money's coming out of one section going into another.
Okay.
So, I will note that it's probably helpful for each page to talk about at the beginning what the title is and what the total is before you start, that it's going to add up to with the other side.
That's fine.
I think that's at the bottom.
Okay, yep, I can do that.
Motion to go back in session.
A motion to go back in session?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Go back into the amendments. In terms of proposing the personnel amendments, as discussed, these are amendments to appropriate the funds, however, the caveat on Page 1 is not to implement the salary increase until council has approved the salary ordinance. The total amendments appropriation on this page include a total amount of $53,889.59. Line by line, in the city council unit, budget unit code 01000101, account code 414000, salary and wages adjustment $6,000. City council unit, budget unit code 01000101, account code 419001, social security adjustment of $459. Bureau of Communication, budget unit code 01010114, account code 414000, salary and wages adjustment $2,000. Bureau of Communication, 01010114, account code 419001, social security adjustment of $153. In the Bureau of Risk Management, budget unit code 01010115, account code 414000, salary and wages $3,000. Bureau of Risk Management, budget unit code 01010115, account code 419001, social security adjustment $229.50. Bureau of Human Resources, budget unit code 01010117, 414000, salary and wages adjustment $5,000. Bureau of Human Resources, budget unit code 01010117, account code 419001, social security adjustment $382.50. In the Bureau of Licensing, Taxation, and Central Support, budget unit code 01010124, account code 414000, salary and wages $225,581.31. Nope, sorry, that's wrong line. Stretch that. Adjustment $6,500.
Yeah, I was going to say, who's...
Apologize for that. Bureau of Licensing, Taxation, and Central Support, budget unit code 01010124, account code 419001, social security adjustment of $497.25. In the Bureau of Planning, budget unit code 01030135, account code 414000, salary and wages adjustment $3,200. Bureau of Planning, budget unit code 01030135, account code 419001, social security adjustment $244.80. And the Host Municipality Fees Fund, budget unit code 21212110, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $800. Host, I can speak. Host Municipality Fees Fund, budget unit code 21212110, account code 419001, social security adjustment of $61.20. Host Municipality Fees Fund, budget unit code 21212100, account code 399099, estimated cash carryover of $861.20. In the Office of the Mayor, budget unit code 01000102, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $2,500. Office of the Mayor, budget unit code 01000102, account code 49, I'm sorry, account code 419001, social security adjustment $191.25. Office of the City Solicitor, budget unit code 01000105, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $630. Office of the City Solicitor, budget unit code 01000105, account code 419001, social security adjustment $48.20. In the Bureau of Financial Management, budget unit code 01010112, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $2,000. Bureau of Financial Management, budget unit code 01010112, account code 419001, social security adjustment $153. Bureau of Human Resources, 01010117, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $3,000. Bureau of Human Resources, budget unit code 01010117, account code 419001, social security adjustment $229.50. Bureau of Parks and Recreation, budget unit code 01080180, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $7,000. Bureau of Parks and Recreation, budget unit code 01080180, account code 419001, social security adjustment of $535.50. Bureau of Police, budget unit code 01040142, account code 414000, salaries and wages $630. Bureau of Police, budget unit code 01040142, account code 419001, social security adjustment $48.20. Bureau of Vehicle Management, budget unit code 010660172, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $5,000. Bureau of Vehicle Management, budget unit code 01060172, account code 419001, social security adjustment $382.50. Neighborhood Services, budget unit code 25062562, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $2,000. Neighborhood Services, budget unit code 25062562, account code 419001, social security adjustment $153. That concludes the personnel amendments, and again, the motion is to approve the appropriation and, however, withhold the increase upon passage of the salary ordinance. And thank you, Mayor, for agreeing to that. I appreciate that. Moving on to Page 2, sorry.
We need to vote on that. Are we going to vote on them all together, or you want to vote? We need to vote on them separately, since he did them separately.
No, but these are all under one amendment. Do you want to vote on Page 1?
We should do them separately, since he's told them separately.
Or the adjustment of the other pick, or is my...
No, these are all the personnel ones.
That's okay. Well, it's all right, we'll vote on, we'll vote on all...
Yeah. We're going to do them all together?
Yes.
Okay. Page 2 is general fund amendments.
So, you're reading all those?
Yep, I got to read them all.
No, I'm saying, are you reading all those?
They have to, because they weren't in the record, they were at committee.
I said, you're reading all those.
I thought you said there was, I thought there was a question mark at the front here.
Shall I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. General fund amendments on Page 2. Office of City Solicitor, budget unit code 01000105, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment $3,000. Office of City Solicitor, budget unit code 01000105, account code 419001, social security adjustment of $229.50. Office of City Solicitor, budget unit code 01000105, account code 421010, legal account, this is a deduction of $3,229.50. Bureau of Licensing, Taxation, and Central Support, budget unit code 01010124, account code 453049, a lease purchase agreement, a change of $1,095. Bureau of Codes, budget unit code 01, sorry, let me start. Budget unit code 01030137, account code 453049, lease purchase $1,095. Bureau of Parks and Recreation, budget unit code 01080180, account code 429090, miscellaneous contracted services, this is a deduction of $13,875. Bureau of Parks and Recreation, budget unit code 01080180, account code 452000, Buildings and Structures, this is an adjustment of $13,875. In the Bureau of Licensing, Taxation, and Central Support, budget unit code 01010124, account code 414000, salaries and wages adjustment of $1,189.27. Bureau of Licensing, Taxation, and Central Support, budget unit code 01010124, account code 419001, social security adjustment of $90.98. In the Bureau of Police, budget unit code 1040142, account code 414000, salaries and wages, this is a deduction of $164,299.73. In the Bureau of Police, budget unit code 1040142, account code 419001, social security adjustment, a deduction of $2,382.35. In the Bureau of Fire, budget unit code 01040151, account code 414000, salaries and wages, a deduction of $111,545.93. Bureau of Fire, budget unit code 01040151, account code 419001, social security deduction of $1,617.42. From the Office of DCED Director, budget unit code 01030134, account code 464005, walk-to-work program, an increase $50,000. General Revenue, account 01, oh, sorry, budget unit code 01000100, account code 316000. Emergency Municipal Services, a deduction of $325,000. Vehicle Management, budget unit code 01060172, account code 414000, salaries and wages, deduction of $37,963. Vehicle Management, budget unit code 01060172, account code 419001, social security adjustment, a deduction of $2,904.17. Office of the Director, budget unit code 01030134, account code 414000, salaries and wages, a deduction of $6,923.8. Office of the Director, budget unit code 01030134, account code 419001, social security deduction of $529.62. In the Bureau of Parks and Recreation, 01080180, account code 414000, salaries and wages, a deduction of $10,769.23. Bureau of Parks and Recreation, budget unit code 01080180, account code 419001, social security adjustment, a reduction of $823.85. Those are the amendments on Page 2, as proposed in the general fund amendments. Moving on to Page 3, these are special fund amendments. Parks and Recreation Fund Events, budget unit code 54505403, account code 382000, Contributions and Donation, a deduction of $60,000. Parks and Recreation Fund Events, budget unit code 54505403, account code 429087, Marketing Promotion Act, deduction of $57,600. Parks and Recreation Fund Events, budget unit code 54505403, account code 439015, Office Equipment, a deduction of $2,400. That concludes the amendments on Page 4. 3, sorry. Now, onto Page 4, Special Fund Amendments. Fire Protection Fund Urban Search, budget unit code 52505203, account code 399099, an estimated cash carryover of $8,000, and that's in addition. Fire Protection Fund Smoke Detection, budget unit code 52505204, account code 399099, estimated cash carryover of $3,000. dollars. Page five. These are special fund amendments as well. In Police Protection Fund, Illegal Gun Program, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-one, account code four-three-zero-zero-nine-nine, miscellaneous supplies and expenses, an addition of twenty-four-hundred dollars. Police Protection Fund, Police Training, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-two, account code three-four-two-zero-eight-eight, PA State Police reimbursement, an increase of a hundred-and-twelve-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and forty-one cents. In Police Protection Fund, Police Training, five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-two, account code four-two-nine-zero-zero-one, tuition and training adjustment of thirty-five thousand dollars. Police Protection Fund, K-9, I think we're gonna rename this at some point, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-three, account code four-three-zero-zero-nine-nine, miscellaneous supplies and expenses, an addition of a thousand dollars. Police Protection Fund, Police Projects, five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-five, account code three-eight-two-zero-zero-zero, contributions and donation of one-thousand-dollar change. Police Protection Fund, Police Projects, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-five, account code four-three-zero-zero-zero-one, educational, increase, five hundred dollars. Police Protection Fund, Police Projects, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-five, account code four-two-five-zero-three-zero, building maintenance, adjustment of ten thousand dollars. Police Protection Fund, Police Projects, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-five, account code four-two-five-zero-nine-o, maintenance service contracts, increase, six thousand dollars. Police Protection Fund, Police Projects, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-five, account code four-three-zero-zero-five-two, vehicle parts and supplies, five thousand dollars increase. Police Protection Fund, Police Projects, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-five, account code four-three-zero-zero-five-four, auto body parts and supplies, increase, five thousand. Police Protection Fund, Police Projects, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-five, account code four-three-nine-zero-one-five, office equipment, increase, eighteen thousand. Police Protection Fund, five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-six, account code four-three-zero-zero-five-four, auto body parts and supplies, increase, thirty thousand. Police Protection Fund, DARA Program, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-seven, account code four-three-zero-zero-zero-one, educational, increase, one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars and eighty-two cents. Police Protection Fund, Protect Harrisburg Legal Defense, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-eight, account code three-eight-two-zero-zero-zero, contributions and donation, a deduction of forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Police Protection Fund, Protect Harrisburg Legal Defense, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-eight, account code four-two-one-zero-one-zero, legal, a forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-dollar deduction. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code three-nine-six-zero-zero-zero, grant proceeds, a reduction of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code three-nine-nine-zero-nine-nine, estimated cash carryover, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code four-one-four-zero-zero-zero, salaries and wages, adjustment, fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code four-one-six-zero-zero-zero, overtime, addition, twenty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code four-one-nine-zero-zero-one, social security adjustment of one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code four-two-one-zero-two-zero, audit, addition of three-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code four-two-nine-zero-zero-one, tuition and training, addition of five-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, four-three-zero-zero-zero-one, educational, increase, twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code four-three-zero-zero-one-one, custodial, increase, thirty-five thousand. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code four-three-zero-zero-nine-nine, miscellaneous supplies and expenses, adjustment of six-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Police Protection Fund, PA Gaming Grant, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-nine, account code four-three-nine-zero-one-five, office equipment, increase of twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred. Police Protection Fund, K-9 Equestrian, budget unit code five-three-five-zero-five-three-zero-four, account code four-three-zero-zero-zero-one, educational, increase, twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and seventy cents. That is page five. Last page, everyone, thank you for your patience. Page six, Neighborhood Services Amendments. Neighborhood Services, budget unit code two-five-zero-six-two-five-six-two, account code four-one-four-zero-zero-zero, salary and wages, adjustment of five-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. Neighborhood Services, budget unit code two-five-zero-six-two-five-six-two, account code four-one-nine-zero-zero-one, social security adjustment, four-hundred-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Neighborhood Services, budget unit code two-five-zero-six-two-five-six-two, account code four-two-nine-zero-nine-zero, miscellaneous contracted services, a change of seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars and fifty cents. Neighborhood Services, two-five-zero-six-two-five-zero-zero, account code three-nine-eight-zero-two-eight, disposal utility fund, increase, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars and fifty cents. Disposal Fund, budget unit code two-eight-two-eight-two-eight-zero-zero, account code three-nine-nine-zero-nine-nine, estimated cash carryover, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Disposal Fund, two-eight-two-eight-two-eight-one-zero, account code four-eight-one-zero-two-five. Neighborhood Services Fund, an increase, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Thus concludes all of the proposed amendments for the budgetary allotment for the changes.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any questions or comments on the amendments?
You need a second.
Pardon me?
You would need a second.
I thought I did have a second. Oh, I thought I did have a second. Okay. Now, have a first and a second. Any question or comments on the amendments? Here and none, please call the vote on the amendments.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill Two of two thousand sixteen.
Bill Two of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Mr. Allot, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, Title V Licensing and Taxation, Part Five, Real Estate Taxes, Chapter Five dash five-on-one, Property Tax, by establishing for the year two thousand and sixteen, a tax levy on land and improvements, and providing for the distribution of taxes levied and assessed, and providing for a tax rebate for the difference between the tax due and attributable to the year two thousand and sixteen, tax levy over the tax due and attributable to the year two thousand and six, tax levy for qualifying senior citizens.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance for final passage.
Ordinance for final passage, Bill One of two thousand and six was moved by Mr. Allot, second by Mr. Baltimore, is as amended, an ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the City of Harrisburg for the year two thousand and sixteen.
Any questions or comments? Here and none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
I'll abstain.
I don't believe you can abstain.
You can't abstain.
I can't abstain on a.
No.
On a code section, you have to vote on a budget, yes or no?
No, you have to vote yes or no.
Okay, I guess, no, then.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill One, as amended, passes.
Moving on to Bill Two.
Bill Two of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Mr. Allot, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, Title Five, Licensing and Taxation, Part Five, Real Estate Taxes, Chapter Five dash five-on-one, Property Tax, by establishing for the year two thousand and sixteen, a tax levy on land and improvements, and providing for the distribution of taxes levied and assessed, and providing for a tax rebate for the difference between the tax due and attributable to the year two thousand and sixteen, tax levy over the tax due and attributable to the year two thousand and six, tax levy for qualifying senior citizens.
Any questions or comments? Here and none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill Two passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolutions, Resolution One, two thousand and sixteen.
Resolution One of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Bill McAvoy to serve on the Building and Housing Code of Board of Appeals for the City of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments on Resolution One? Here and none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution One passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Five.
Resolution Five of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Mr. Baltimore, second by Mr. Allot. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final development plan and lot consolidation plan submitted by Scott Soso of the Harrisburg Properties Associates to consolidate six lots at eight-thirty-eight South Twenty Street, eight-twenty-five Hudson Street, eight-thirty-five Hudson Street, eight-forty Hudson Street, eight-fifty-one, and South Nineteenth Street, and develop an approximately fifteen-thousand-square-foot adult daycare facility on site.
Any questions or comments on Resolution Five? Here and none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution Five passes.
Moving on to Resolution Seven.
Resolution, was Resolution Six was removed.
Yes.
Resolution Seven of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution amending the rules of council for the Harrisburg City Council.
That will be placed in Administration Committee, I'm sorry. Resolution Eight, please.
Resolution Eight of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Ms. Hodges, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth Department of Transportation for the purpose of improving the Riverwalk Slab and Steps and Riverfront Park.
That will be placed in Parks and Recreation Committee. Moving on to Resolution Nine.
Resolution Nine of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth Department of Transportation for the purpose of improving the sidewalk system and providing safer ADA-compliant pedestrian crossings on Hur Street between Cameron and North Fifteenth Street.
That will be placed in Public Safety Committee. Moving on to Resolution Ten.
Resolution Ten of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation requesting a multimodal transportation fund of six-million-seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars to improve vehicular transit, pedestrian, bicycle movements north of Capitol Complex, and address several transportation-related safety issues.
That will be placed in Public Safety. Moving on to Resolution Eleven.
Resolution Eleven of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying an Animal Protection Services Agreement with Humane Society of Harrisburg Area to provide services for the city's animal control program.
That will be placed in Public Safety Committee. Moving on to Resolution Twelve.
Resolution Twelve of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of purchasing hose, nozzles, and computer tablets for the Bureau of Fire.
That will be placed in Public Safety as well. Moving on to Resolution Thirteen.
Resolution Thirteen of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution authorizing an application to Impact Harrisburg to fund up to three-million dollars for the City of Harrisburg multimodal transportation project.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution Fourteen.
Resolution Fourteen of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution appointing Reverend Don Rico E. Colton to the Harrisburg Housing Authority.
That will be placed in Administration Committee as well. Moving on to Resolution Fifteen.
Resolution Fifteen of two thousand and sixteen was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution approving a professional services contract with Wallace Montgomery and Associates, LLP, a design professional to perform engineering for the Third Street Multimodal Project Phase One B.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution Sixteen.
Resolution Sixteen of two thousand and sixteen is, was moved by Mr. Allot, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution approving a professional services contract with Trout, Eversol, and Roth, LLP, CPAs, and business advisors to conduct a reconciliation of the city workers, cities' workers' compensation liability, compensated absences liability, post-employment benefits, obligations, disposal receivable, and sanitation receivable accounts.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, any old business this evening? Here and none, how about new business, any new business, council members?
I just came across an event that I wanted the public to know about. There's gonna be a citywide youth conference held from seven o'clock to eleven PM, February twelfth, and nine AM to six PM, February thirteenth, at the Saint Paul Missionary Baptist Church, and that's located at twelve-oh-one, North Seventeenth Street in Harrisburg. It's basically, aims to inspire youth to work towards positive change in their communities. So I encourage all city residents and all youth in the city, if you're looking for something to do that's positive this weekend, to attend this event. And if you're on Facebook, more information about the event can be found there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else from new business?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore? Oh, Mr. Majors, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to announce that the Public Works Committee will meet on February twenty-fourth at five-thirty to consider Resolution Four of two thousand and sixteen.
Anyone else?
Me.
Mr. Johnson?
I am having a public safety meeting scheduled for Monday, February twenty-second, and I will be scheduling another public safety meeting with the date to be announced soon.
What time is your meeting on twenty-second?
Will be at five-thirty here at City Hall.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam President, if I may?
Yes.
Just, there's gonna be a workshop on the Act seven forty-seven recovery plan that the mayor has asked for, inviting the council and the public to, on March the third.